Trying to get our. Okay, go court order, declare round four. Mr. Crenshaw. And I have this, Jento, say a prayer for us and say one prayer for Mr. Roberts and Mr. Crenshaw. Thank you.
Dear Father, we just thank you for this day, just thank you for the moisture you brought our way.
Thank you for.
Thank you, dear Lord. We pray, dear Lord, that you will continue blessing us with moisture and beautiful sunshine, and we thank you for all that you do provide us. I pray, dear Lord, for this meeting, that the decisions that are made here today will be clarifying, dear Lord, and wisdom be presented, and they will follow through with your will. I pray, dear Lord, for our servicemen and women, dear Lord, who are out there. I pray for protection of them and as they're defending our freedom. I pray, dear Lord, for Commissioner Crenshaw. I pray, dear Lord, that you will continue healing him. Thank you for the good surgery that has happened. I pray, dear Lord, for Robert. I pray, dear Lord, that you'll give him the strength, the peace, and the comfort that you need, your Lord, and for Caleb and Leanne as well. I pray, dear Lord, for Kay, and I want to thank you right now for the healing that you are already doing in her body and are about to do. Watch over and guide and protect him as he travels both back and forth. Be with Kay as she goes through therapy. And I again want to thank you for what you're about to do. Now I ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Okay, glad to see Commissioner Maxwell back. How are you feeling, Andy?
Just peachy.
Okay, well, there you go. All right.
Better than pretty.
I don't know. All right, let's proceed. Consent agenda, Ms. Jento.
Yes. I have minutes from a regular meeting, twelve twenty-three to twenty-four. Special meetings, one, January the second and January the sixth of two thousand twenty-five. I did receive a personnel report. I received certification of additional revenue. Amendment by changes was received. Investment reports I received November and December of two thousand twenty-four, but I believe you guys are only taking action on November. Is that right? Okay. Auditors' report of financial conditions unreconciled, January the seventh, two thousand twenty-five. I have a treasurer's financial condition from November two thousand twenty-four. Departmental financial reports have agrar lab, constables, one and two, sheriff, JP's, one and two, county clerk, district clerk, Goldsmith, DMV, tax collector, ECAD. Bills, claims, and accounts have six sets. Certificates for E and F, none. That's it.
Okay. Ms. Key.
The only thing I will go over is the financial condition, report of financial condition. As of January seventh, general fund, and it's the first report is the cash, statement of cash position. It's the actual ending balance column, general fund, all funds on deposit, four million, two hundred forty-four thousand, six hundred forty-eight oh six. Roden Bridge, five hundred seventy thousand, seven sixty-five ninety-nine on the second page. Bottom right, still in the actual ending balance, all funds on deposit, general ledger balance as of January seventh, ten million, three hundred fifty-one thousand, eight hundred seven dollars, ninety-three cents.
Okay. What's this thing?
November investment report. We, at that point in time, we had a one ninety thousand, two hundred twenty-three dollar CD. That's OPEB CD, that's for employee benefits. One two hundred fifty thousand dollar CD at First Financial. One two hundred fifty thousand dollar CD at Schertz, one at Texas Bank, one at Prosperity Bank. We had money in the money market. At First Financial, First National Bank, twelve dollars, the Texas Class, Tex Bull Prime and Tex Bull, as you can see there, and then Texas Class funds for the ARPA, ARPA funds in an amount of two ninety, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred seventy-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. November, any questions on that? Nope. Financials. Is the, my affidavit for the month ending November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. As of November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, the amount of cash and assets that custody in my office was nine million, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. Next you will see the monthly fund balance report. Actual ending balance was the general ledger balances as of November thirtieth. Eastland County debt, we paid off the First Financial Bank debt. These are all Roden Bridge in November. Then you have interest earned from October two thousand twenty-three through November two thousand twenty-three. In the amount of fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. And then, I'm sorry. That was October twenty-fourth through November twenty-fourth. It's down from the sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-nine cents from two thousand twenty-three. Our interest earned is down. Nine thousand dollars. Then we have the pledged security listing for Prosperity Bank in the amount of one hundred five thousand, two hundred and two dollars and seventeen cents. Our portfolio, pledged market for First Financial Bank, pledged market value of ten million, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred sixty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. And that will be it. Any questions?
Any questions for, or Terry? Thank you, Christina. Careful to turn and entertain a motion for the consent agenda. Motion by Mr. Max, Mr. Maxwell. Motion by Mr. Rain, and second by Mr. Maxwell. All those in favor say aye. Post same sign, motion carries. And then we got all this.
What are you doing?
I'm just about.
I don't feel pretty.
I was wondering that.
What you're preaching today.
Long days of work here. Easy. It's unbelievable. It's nicer than it was after the week that we had, usually the.
It was still cold though.
Yeah, it was. It's cold this morning. It was ninety degrees this morning.
Still hitting bad.
Big frost. Jim, I need for it gets.
Did you notice I shortened the minutes?
There's six pages here.
Who's that for?
Payables.
Is this the, you gotta have a copy, they gotta have a copy?
This is one, one set for every set of payables.
They just love you. They just want to make sure to get you.
Kathy's making copies right after court, and that helps.
Thank goodness. Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome. The agenda and the minutes, and the business sheet went to eight and a half by eleven, so it's just two thousand twenty-five.
Thank goodness. That's another plus. Because we're all about saving money.
How much money does that save?
A little bit.
Ronnie's got plenty of money.
Oh, there's a. Who signed this?
The first one. There's six pages.
Okay.
You signed them all?
Uh huh. Do you want to double check?
No, that's okay.
Ronnie hadn't signed them.
I'm Robert.
Wow.
Must have been blind to that signature.
Man, that's. He's just cold hearted.
No, I'm not.
I talked to, I've only got response from. Okay, just got response from the second fire chief. We, I had lifted it Friday because of the moisture that we had and over the weekend. Let some people get some burning done and stuff, and so I think we're back to probably put it back on. We're, Daryl Fox is concerned about the wind, and obviously all you gotta do is look west to see what wind. I saw a video the other day of the wind coming across there, and it, it was blowing those sparks. I mean, absolutely horizontal. I mean, I could not believe how, how hard the wind's going.
I'll make the motion.
What, what, are we there yet?
Burn man.
Yeah, yeah, we're there. So motion by Mr. Wilson, second by.
Me, second.
Mr. Maxwell. All those in favor say aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Ginger, burn ban's back on. Thank you. Emergency amendments?
None, Judge.
All right, none, and we will move forward. Discussing appointing loss control committee members, Ms. Key.
The committee currently consists of Sandy Kegel as a public member, Donnie Gray as loss control officer.
Donnie who?
Donnie Gray. The sheriff, the district attorney, county auditor, county treasurer, commissioner precinct one, county judge. And I would like to keep those members on the committee, but also add Lisa Johnson as human resources and Sonya Neal as risk management.
I'll make that motion to add those two and keep everybody assigned.
Why are we adding people, just out of curiosity?
Well, because human resources was in my office, and I talked to Christina or emailed, and it would be good to have human resources on the loss control committee. And also Sonya does all the risk management in my office, so I'd like her on there. So we're not having to recommunicate.
Who made the second, I'm sorry.
Okay. Most of my Mr. Wilson? No.
Right.
By Mr. Rain, no, you did the fire deal, sorry. Not by Mr. Rain, second by Mr. Wilson, all those in favor say aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. I'm letting the fire chiefs know that the, the, uh, burn ban's back on. I'm not checking scores. Discussing considering entering a new one-year plan agreement with AT&amp;T for the annex elevator telephone and allow the county auditor to authorize. Oh, well, the abatement. Review, revise, and adopt Eastland County tax abatement policy agreement, Ms. Key. She's on both of them.
Is that this one sheet you wrote to me?
Yes, I sent the policy out to everyone. The only changes in what I sent out were county judge's name and the date. So if nobody saw other changes, it just needs approval.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Key on the tax abatement policy? I would entertain a motion.
Formed agreement.
Motion.
Motion, uh, do what?
There's a policy and an agreement.
Okay, Mr. Maxwell, are you approving both of those? Or do we need to also approve the auditor and the, I'll do other stuff. No, you do both of them, thank you. Second by Mr. Rain, all those in favor say aye. Boom, done. There we go.
Thank you.
Who made the second?
I did.
Okay, and these two sheets go with that?
With what I sent, yes.
Yeah, they're signature pages.
Yeah.
And could I get copies of those, please?
Oh my gosh. Yeah, you want copies too.
I know. So demanding.
Hey, thanks for going to the, to the eight and a half by eleven.
You're welcome.
Because that, we just don't have the file folders like that anymore. I mean, if we do. Oh.
Bottom one.
Oh, there you go. Bottom. The man's barely here, he's been sick. What?
Recloner and football.
That was. Okay, now, discussing, considering, discussing considering entering into a new one-year plan agreement with AT&amp;T for the annex elevator telephone and allow the county auditor to authorize the agreement, Ms. Key.
That plan is up. We are currently paying three hundred and fifty dollars a month for one telephone line. I tried to get them last year to drop the call waiting and all the extras that come with it, they wouldn't do it. This year they're going to drop it to just a plain old telephone line for one seventy-five a month, but it's a twelve-month agreement. When the elevator over there, whatever Donnie's planning for updating, there'll be a different phone service available, but we need to change our agreement now because it's up. Kathy, did I send that to you?
I don't know, that was last week.
Well, I'm all about going from three fifty to one seventy-five.
Yes, sir.
Is it, do you have a signature sheet?
No, and it's one of those things I'm gonna have to do online and.
And get a copy?
Whatever I get, I will give you.
Okay, great.
AT&amp;T's not real good at doing paper anymore.
Much of anything.
So I'll need authorization. For you to sign, Judge?
No, it'll be for me.
For the auditor's.
Yeah. So I need a motion.
You got it.
Thank you. For also to the signature as well. Can we combine those two?
Yeah.
Those separate motions?
No, they're good.
The separate.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. All right, motion carries. Discussing considering requesting bids for lease purchase financing to require a US service, force service granted, grant-funded equipment and vehicles.
I gave each of you paperwork.
Yes, you own this thing a lot.
Do what?
You're on this thing a lot.
It looks like this, you had paperwork, notice to bidder. The court gave me permission to seek financing, but I talked to Judy Langford, and we have to go out for formal bids for this process, which takes court action. I put together basically the same bid specs for the equipment, I just changed it to financing. So the first page is the notice to bidder, and I need to make sure I have everything on there that we're financing. And the second page is the specifications that I came up with. Also need to make sure I'm covering everything that y'all think needs to be covered. And I need permission to advertise for bids.
How are we looking on the, uh, what she's listed there? Looks like everything's there.
Yeah, it looks like it's there.
One excavator, two compact track loaders, one tractor, rubber cutter, and three.
And on the amount, Robert, I went back to the application and took the total of the equipment plus the additional blades, and it came out to three point two five million. I don't have any kind of a agreement, an approved agreement. Do you have one?
For more.
For this, this grant?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you have it in email, if you would just.
I don't know if I've got.
Okay.
I had to have it in email because I printed it, but I don't know where I got it from.
Okay. I went back through my email and did not find the actual grant agreement.
Let's see if I can find it.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
But we're good as far as proceeding on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then entertain a motion. Did you just, were you, were you making a motion or did you just scratch your nose?
This is for approval of the specs and allow auditor to go out for bids?
Yeah, same.
Okay, motion by Mr. Maxwell, I think, and second by Mr. Wilson, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Okay, investment committee to file minutes of the January seventh, two thousand twenty-five meeting, Ms. Key.
You should each have a copy. And it's, we met on January seventh, and you should have a copy of the minutes from the meeting.
Does that take action?
Yes.
Okay. Need a motion to accept the minutes. Motion by Mr. Maxwell. Second by Mr. Wilson, all those in favor say aye. Post same sign, motion carries. H, discussing considering the investment plan from the investment committee.
Are you gonna come up, Christina?
There are three agenda items involved in the investment committee.
I did send this out in email, that's just the December investment report, it'll be approved, up for approval at the next meeting. Because we did have a few changes, you got it, okay, I have it. We did have a few changes from November to December. So we did redeem the OPEB CD, the ninety thousand dollar CD at First Financial Bank, which is designated for employee benefits, and we will reopen another one once we get the.
The report.
The report, the actuary, I can't say that word, that report. We still have one, that one two hundred fifty thousand dollar CD at First Financial Bank, ending at five seven nine two, matures in March. We opened a four-month CD, we redeemed the Texas Bank CD and then opened a four-month CD at First Financial Bank that will mature in April. And then we still have the Schertz Bank CD, Prosperity, and then we have the money market at First National Bank, Texas Class and Tex Bull Prime. We discussed when the two hundred fifty thousand dollar CD at First Financial Bank matures in March. We discussed, we discussed redeeming it and investing in the money market account at First National Bank.
Wichita Falls.
Yes, Wichita Falls, yes, First National Bank, Wichita Falls.
Because that was the, and the thinking was is that that, that had the best best return for, on the interest, and it also is a insured account, or insured, insured funds. So that's why we decided to go that route. Instead of putting it in one of these others, you know, one percent or one percent change is better than minus one percent.
And then we discussed ARPA funds, we discussed leaving it in Texas Class, and then moving it to the checking account as, as it's needed. So it's still earning a good interest rate.
Any questions for the treasurer? Or for me, because I was there on that deal with auditor.
Yes, he was. It's us or someone.
All right.
So do we have a resolution, or is this order adopting what you're calling a resolution?
That's not yet. That's only just the investment policy. This is just discussing what we discuss to do with our funds.
This actually a report only then? Is that right?
Yeah, yes.
So there's no action?
What agenda item are we on here?
H.
We're still on H after we just voted on it?
We voted on G.
Oh, gotcha, my bad. Okay.
Robert, would you please catch the camera for us?
I'm sorry, she can't help it.
I can't.
You get past D, I mean, that's pretty much what she had off. She don't go much further than that.
She's got to start back from A's in her ABCs.
She never, she never got to A, B, or C, but the D she's pretty familiar with.
Yeah, that's right, thank you.
Ginger, can we end on the agenda, start at D? Instead of going to E, can we go to double A? The double B?
You're kinda, kinda getting confused around that.
All right. I, review investment policy and adopt the resolution, adopting the Eastland County investment policy, Ms. Key.
What I sent out, what I emailed out had suggested changes in red, and that came from our investment training last June. I also changed the dates. I think I had to change the county judge because it was done in twenty-three the last time. And then, yes, the last page is the order approving.
I have to reprint that because mine said the twenty-seventh on it.
Mine doesn't have a date on it.
Yeah, mine was just from your email.
It just considered your resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
At the bottom it says be it resolved.
Okay.
Okay, motion to adopt the resolution. Mr. Rain.
Second.
Taken by Mr. Maxwell, all those in favor say aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
If I could get a copy of that signed, please, I'll see. Thank you.
Just that. Like you might keep flipping.
No, 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 no. Okay, Jay. Discussing considering the addition of the wildfire mitigation coordinator position and setting the hourly rate. Ms. Key.
Did I put that here?
I don't know. Thanks, Ginger. All those in favor accepted Ginger's version of that.
I, I guess, well, okay, because budget is already set, the court will need to add the wildfire mitigation coordinator position and set the hourly rate.
Well, we have to do the same for the.
Yes.
For all the other positions as well, the specialist and the, what do they call them?
Sawyers.
At the.
Yeah.
Yeah, at the precinct level.
Yeah, equipment operator and sawyer.
Yes, and actually I'll put the rest of that on, the process had already started for the coordinator, so I wanted to get that on the agenda where it was all done.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
I'll put it on the next agenda to do that.
Okay. Okay, we have one, two, three, four, there are five witnesses that heard you say that you would be putting it on the agenda.
I will.
Okay. So, what do we?
Um, this position, I believe, was budgeted at fifty thousand dollars.
And then we.
Annual.
And then we had additional info, additional funds that were going from the county side. So how does that figure into this as well?
Now, this is the overall budget or this just a salary?
So.
This is just, we're just setting salary so I can amend the salary list.
But you said fifty thousand is just for the salary?
Yes, I believe it was fifty thousand.
It was fifty thousand.
Okay. Um, yeah, the rest of that is gonna be another conversation we have to have. Um, cause that, all that's gonna need to be set before.
I thought this is, okay, but I thought all of this was.
Well, this is the wildfire mitigation coordinator, it's not the grant.
It is the grant.
Grant manager or whatever you're going to call the position, the other position.
Coordinator, yeah.
Uh, so, yes, I guess all that needs to be set, um.
When's our next meeting?
The twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh. So this portion of it.
I'll make sure he's okay.
Oh.
Yeah.
Waking him up over here.
Yeah, I was trying to find that email from, we had all that grant stuff on there and I couldn't find it.
And Tyler does take it out six decimal places.
Zero point zero three eight four six one.
Four.
Point, and then we'll come back on the twenty-seventh for the other part of that deal. Motion by Mr. Rains.
Same.
Second by Mr. Wilson, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Are discuss and consider declaring an emergency to establish the budget for the wildfire mitigation coordinator position.
Um.
Ms. Key.
And you also have a document I passed out, um, estimated fund balances as of January tenth, twenty twenty-five. Um, and I want to go over where, where we are as far as fund balance. Um, you'll see fund balance as of the fiscal year twenty-three audit. For general fund, four million forty-one thousand six hundred fourteen dollars. And for grants fund, one hundred twenty-one thousand one hundred sixty-two dollars. The estimated fiscal year fund balance, and that is strictly out of budget. So I took where we were as of Friday. Um, for fiscal year twenty-four, there's still some changes to be made and that is not an audit, that is just an estimate. Um, so fund ten will be negative one hundred eighty-eight thousand, one hundred twenty-three fifty-three, and that's general fund. Uh, Roden Bridge is negative two hundred five thousand, six hundred fifteen oh two. So the estimated total fund balance for fiscal year twenty-four, general fund, three million eight hundred fifty-three thousand, four hundred ninety dollars, forty-seven cents. Roden Bridge, negative eighty-four thousand, four hundred fifty-one oh two. Um, I then took the budgeted fiscal year twenty-five carryover because those funds are dedicated. So for general fund, it'll be a negative two million nine hundred twenty-six thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars, seventy-nine cents. And Roden Bridge, a negative four thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars. The projected total fiscal year twenty-five fund balance, general fund, nine hundred twenty-seven thousand, two hundred twelve dollars, sixty-eight cents. Roden Bridge, eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred six dollars, two cents. Um, total fund balance for those two projected fiscal year twenty-five fund balance for Roden Bridge and general fund, eight hundred thirty-eight thousand, four hundred six dollars, sixty-six cents. The next two pages are my estimates of what it's going to cost for each of these positions. Um, there are two assumptions, all positions begin on February third, which I know they will all begin February third. The other assumption is all position, positions are new hires without longevity. Um, because I did not add any longevity into this. And you'll see the court, wildfire coordinator, the wildfire specialist, the, the two specialists. Four heavy equipment operators. And four sawyers, so that total budget would be four hundred thirty-six thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars, sixty-one cents. And if the court declares an emergency, and right now we don't know how we're going to get reimbursed for this. We don't know how long it's going to take, even what the submission process is. If the court declares this emergency, you will be using over half of the estimated remaining fund balance. So if we have a major event, and hope to God we do not. There will be less than five hundred thousand available to declare an emergency. That's it.
So what's your recommendation? Return the nine million dollars back?
No, um, no, that's not my recommendation, I mean, that's money that will help in wildfire mitigation. I'm just giving you numbers, Judge.
No, I'm, no, I'm not, I'm not asking you a trick question, I'm asking you what your opinion is, but like I said, if we don't. This is one of those deals where we can't afford to.
Yeah, until you get started, you don't know what's gonna be like on the reimbursement, I mean, equipment or anything wise.
So is there, is there a way though, let me, let me ask you this, cause I was gonna ask this when we were talking about the, the, the deal. It's there a way for us, because this is such a hit, first off, I, I don't think it's gonna be four thirty-seven. And change because we, we're not starting February the third. I mean, none of these positions except the coordinators start on February third, so that, that's gonna change it a little bit. The other thing is, I think we're only gonna wind up doing one specialist instead of two specialists. Because I think, I think they're gonna run out of stuff to do. I mean, honestly, I think, I think it's gonna be chaos the first six months, maybe even longer. But then I think they're gonna run out of stuff to do and I don't want somebody just sitting around impeding.
Well, there again though, I still think you're gonna have to have one of the specialists to be a data entry individual.
No, I agree, I agree completely.
I don't know if you've tried to get on that website that Shelby sent to us on the submission of the work.
Mm-hmm.
Eh, it's gonna be. We can't, well, we can't even get on it to look at it right now because the administrator has to grant access before you can look at it. Nobody can answer who our administrator is, so.
It ain't me.
No, well, there's gonna be, and see, that, there again though, it's gonna be. Basically double or triple work. So we go out and do a job and I, and I go on iWorks and, and put it in the iWorks. If, in our grant, we have also a data system that they're talking about developing. So we put it in iWorks, iWorks can't talk to this, so we've gotta enter it into whatever the, and Langford and them are gonna come up with. Langford and them, then we gotta take it out of that and put it into the submission to the, so you're entering everything three times.
Potentially, yes.
Yes.
But Langford might actually do the online submission for the grant, for the grant website.
It does, it says, it.
Oh, we're going to do it?
It says all their, all the, and I'm assuming they're gonna be the administrator, is they review the data entry. And, and approve it or reject it, and if they reject it, they've gotta tell you why. It's rejected before it goes to the forest service.
Who won't let iWork with that form, I mean, how?
Well, no, that, the middle part ain't even, never even been developed yet.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
They can't even answer that question, they budgeted one point two million dollars for it in the grant, but nobody can tell you what it's for.
That's a lot of entry and double working.
Yeah, because iWork has already reached out and said, if you'll let us know what, what it is, maybe we can make a talk. But since it's not a developed program yet, nobody can tell you. Um, it, I mean, the stuff for the forest service e- evidently is what they're used. They've u- they use, or it's their actual submission deal on there, so. Because I looked at it to see, cause I truly believe right now, if we go out and mow County Road. One, two, three, that we ought to be entering that in that system as fire suppression because we're mowing the barditches. Because that is part of the maintenance program with this deal. Um.
I agree.
And it also adds to our overall completion rate on that, but we can't do that because we don't have, the administrator ain't set up in the program. And the administrator has to down the line and approve everybody that goes into it.
But, but can we, can we go ahead and do it and document it the best way we can?
We are, I am, in iWork.
With, with the, okay, with, with the thought that at some point in time when they do figure this out?
We, I'm entering it all in iWork.
And that system is backed up?
And that system is backed up, yeah, I mean, but. We're, we're, we're looking at the, and, and the reason why I say, like David and I have talked about, the, the second specialist being a data entry individual. Somebody's gotta sit down and put all this into these other programs. So if, if we've got one central location that's pulling our iWork stuff and entering it into the, the other software. It's going to, it's gonna, number one, free us up and it's gonna give one contact person for them to come back to and say, no, do this or don't do that. Rather than four of us, then them trying to contact us and say, no, do this or that. Eh, we need that one contact individual.
Central point.
Central point, if you make the coordinator the central point, he's sitting in the office every day, all day long, doing nothing but data entry.
Yeah.
Cause we're gonna generate a crap load of paperwork. In, in this deal, so that's the reason why I think we may not need two outgoing specialists that go out and meet with people. We need it, they both have to be trained identical and they both need to do educational stuff. But that second person can, can sit in here and do the data entry too and maintain the records it's gonna take for the five years into this program.
Will this be the data entry, will it be a remote position possibly?
They're gonna have, we're buying them a pickup, so I'd say, no, they need to show up. On the deal, so, but that's, that's my mindset on that.
Well, because, because potentially, and of course, we're, we're, we're inventing a wheel on this thing.
Yeah.
Potentially, on what he's saying, is that that person could also drive to precinct three.
And gonna have to.
And say, hey, and, and let's sit down, we're gonna do your data.
Well, well, that, that, you're gonna have to because it's all mapping, it's not, it's all GPS location from this point to this point.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, and they won't square footage or square acreage of what you've done. So what that, what they're telling me or what I read in the frequently asked questions part of that data stuff is, that's the main deal. It's cause what, you send in that you mowed County Road one hundred from this point to this point. And you did X amount of one hundred square acres. Well, the forest service, that's all they look at, they look at this point, this point, and then they map it. And if it doesn't equal that one hundred, if it's within a ten percent grace of that one hundred square acres, they're rejecting that back to you. And you've gotta go back out and figure it out again.
Mm.
And so, it's gonna be, that person's gonna have to go and, and either look or that person's gonna have to call and say, you got your points wrong. Or I, I need a different point, I need, you know, cause they're not, it's not adding up, but you got a ten percent grace in there over or under on it. This is my understanding in reading the.
I think that's what they said in that meeting too.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, that'd be needed then, for sure.
Well, going back to the question after you, uh, and, and let's say, and I, I know it's not, I know it's not a half a million. I'm just saying that it's a, a, just wrapping up.
That number's actually gonna be higher than that. Because the salaries that are figured into this are not the salaries we just talked about either. Because the coordinator salary figured in this is thirty-three thousand dollars, not fifty.
Right, so next year, you're going to have.
Yeah.
Full salaries.
Yeah, the, these are partial salaries.
Yeah, but anyway, is there, and I'm just throwing this out food for thought, just to, I'm trying to. I'm trying to stretch my rubber band as far as possible, so, so give me a little leeway for doing that. Is there a way for us to borrow that, this salary? Amount for that first year?
I think we're going to have a hard time borrowing that because it's, there, there is nothing to attach to it. So we can borrow for the equipment and do a government lease purchase agreement on the equipment. I think the salary part is going to be harder to borrow.
But, but here, here again, not knowing the circumstances on the reimbursement side of it. It, every payroll is, is, so you pay out a thousand dollars. That thousand dollars is coming out of the fund balance until it's reimbursed.
Yeah.
The moment it's reimbursed, then that, that negativity, that, that set aside is done. So, so every time you get a reimbursement in, you, that number's gonna go down for, for what you have to have, so.
Well, I was just, I, I just.
I don't think, I, I don't think that it's gonna be that big a deal because I think we're gonna get the money back within a couple of weeks.
Once they get their program.
Once they get their program going.
Any anticipated date when that's gonna happen?
Who knows, uh, but I think we'll get.
But we're still under gun.
Here, here the thing is, the sooner we start poking, the faster they've gotta get their crap together.
True.
Yeah.
On there, so.
Cause it's gonna be kinda hard for them to sit there and hold us to goals when we're like, well, we, we had no way of making the goals.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I think that, that once we get that turnaround going, that it'll, it'll be faster. So that actual number here won't be quite as bad, I don't believe myself.
Well, and as soon as we start receiving reimbursements, that's gonna go right back into fund balance.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you, you, you're not, you're not depleting it all at one time. And, and each, each reimbursement is just, it's just feeding it right back, so it's.
It's a wash.
Yeah, yeah.
And part of the equation needs to be, if the court declares the emergency. Which fund balances is coming out, well, it would have to come out of general fund because it's the only one, but. I also think we need to pay this out of Roden Bridge, not general fund, so then we would have to do adjustments in general fund to get money to Roden Bridge.
But are we putting those positions in Roden Bridge or are we putting them in the, in the grant?
We can't pay it out of grant because there's no money to pay it out of grant. So the grant is just going to reimburse what we've already spent. We have to do mental health deputy that way too.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no money in grants fund.
Right, right.
To pay this.
Right, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
All the grant, all the grant fund right now is just a placeholder.
Yeah.
Isn't that right?
Right, so when the money comes in, I'll certify revenue.
Yeah, there's no income into the grant.
Right.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, well, we need to do it anyway. So we need a motion to declare uh, an emergency and establish the budget for the wildfire mitigation coordinator position, and I guess we're gonna have to do that on the.
Well, if we declare this, it'll be for the, all the positions, correct? Is that what you're wanting to do? Cause that's what you gave us.
Yeah.
Um, you know what, let's hold that one till next court and I'll rephrase. So can we just either no action or um, put it on the next agenda? Well, no, let me just reword the whole thing.
Okay.
So we're taking no action on the K?
Yes.
Okay, and then you're gonna put the other ones on there?
Yes, sir.
Alright, good enough, uh, Alfred, uh, Sheriff's Office, uh, racial profiling court, Sheriff Wager.
Y'all should have all got this in your packet, uh, there's no red flags, no indication that we're racially profiling anybody. If you have any questions, come here. Unless y'all want me to read all the numbers to you, all the multiple pages of numbers.
No, of, first I've had to look at yours for the last two years and then I had to look at my own for seven years, so now I know how to, I know how to find my way around that racial profiling report.
And nobody's ever had any questions about it, but.
No, there's no, I, I haven't seen anything from, being an old person, I ain't. No, there's no, I, I haven't seen anything from, being in law enforcement, I haven't seen anything that, that, like the sheriff was saying, had any kind of red flags to. Motion to accept his racial profiling report, though.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Maxwell, seconded by Mr. Wilson, all those in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Okay. Uh, M, discuss and consider moving the JP office to Annex Building, Judge Glenn. One of the things we need to discuss is the potential cost on there, so. Judge, proceed.
You're the one who called us, sorry. Uh, I'm, I'm just here.
Well, I mean, because we have to have permission of court approval to, to make the move, so.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just, so I'm just saying, present your. Your presentation and.
Well, I'm not ready for that. I thought we were here to say, uh, we weren't gonna move, uh.
No.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know. What did you just say?
I thought this was to say we weren't gonna move. I didn't know exactly what this meeting was for, uh, but as far as moving over there, uh.
No, it's discuss and consider, moving the JP office to the deal. Doesn't say discuss and tell JP no.
Well, like I said, I didn't, I didn't call for this meeting.
Oh, okay.
Um.
No, I'm just trying to get the ball rolling.
Oh, okay. Anyway, uh, there's an empty floor over there. We would love to move over there. Our floor is, our courtroom is flooded twice in the past five years that we've been here. Uh, we're having growing pains where we're starting to run out of room for people. That's about it in a nutshell.
Okay. I spoke to, uh, I spoke to Goldsmith on that deal, and they're talking about, uh. It may be around, and he just gave me a general deal that's gonna talk, cost around five grand, uh, potentially on all the IT stuff. Um, I don't know. What other. What other expenditures do you know about? That, that come to, come to mind?
I, I know we're gonna have to have the phones moved over there, but, um. Part of my thing I was prepped for is, uh, AgriLife Extension is on some sort of internet through Goldsmith. So I don't know if it's not the same type of internet or what, and then Goldsmith also does their phones.
Okay.
Uh. So I, I, I don't know if that might.
Pay for that A and M?
A and M doesn't pay for the internet.
They have, I believe they have two internets over there. A and M pays for one of them. I'm not sure. That certain, whatever they do through A and M, they have to do through that deal, and then the rest of it, I believe they have two.
They're on spectrum.
Okay, I was thinking, A and M might not want them.
And talking with Randall, with Goldsmith last week, ideally. We run fiber to. The. Annex, thank you. Um. Right now, it could be done through a bridge, but we've done that in the past. The sheriff's office was on a bridge. It is not consistent, and. We spend a lot of time resetting the bridge. Um, but it could be done temporarily through a bridge for the internet.
There's a bridge over there now. The last bridge. Still don't know what happened to it, but it went down and knocked everything down over there, but they put a temporary one down over there. Where the piece of equipment that Goldsmith actually owns, we didn't buy it. They're just using it temporarily to get me back up and going. So whatever, whatever's gonna have to be replaced eventually.
What are your thoughts? Moving the JP's office to the, over there?
How much remodel and all that's that gonna cost? Approximately?
I don't know what all they want.
They're talking about a jacuzzi.
As far as it's set right now, we're perfectly happy with the setup as it is now, especially the safety and security aspect of it.
Because the elevator's broke, nobody can get up there.
Magnetic locks on doors.
Yeah.
Which one has to be redone?
Yeah, so we, and so we have, have you maybe moved on that, talked to Brad, or?
I've, I've done some talking to some other folks, too. I need to get in there. Uh, it's hard to talk, I haven't even laid eyes on it, so I need to lay eyes on it, so I can. Talk about it.
Okay.
And here, here's where I'm going with that. I don't care where you move. But I'm just, I mean, whatever's best for your office, because you run your office. My concern is that the money that we're gonna expend. We need new cable in here in the courthouse. So we can run more efficiently. So. There's where I'm going with this.
I, I don't disagree with you, but the money that we're talking about over there is not gonna make one iota of.
It's a start.
It's a start, but it's like, okay, we're starting, we're starting our piggy bank.
And I'll remind the court, this is not budgeted.
Yeah.
Yeah. One of the issues that the sheriff had brought up was the, and I'm just, and I'm saying this again, just in disclosure of the commissioners' court, is that the, uh. They're gonna have to redo their, their citations. Uh, DPS, I'm assuming, would have to redo theirs as well. On their judge's letters. Is it, 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 but it's on the citation and on the judge's letters, too. DPS isn't, isn't that big a deal, because they can, they have a lot more money than we do. Uh, but count, the, the sheriff's office would. Um, the, uh. Cameras, there's no cameras over there now, right?
Not that I have access.
No, I don't know that there's any cameras.
There's cameras.
There is cameras?
Probation.
Probation has them.
Probation has the cameras for that floor?
Their floor in the entryway coming into the annex.
Okay, but that's the only, there's not, it's not like what you got, I guess, now. Okay, so there's. Um. So that's door locks and, uh.
If we're moving one of the courts over there, then we probably need to put in a couple of cameras for us, and we'll, but, uh.
Would the constables go with y'all?
Yes.
Okay.
Our office is at our house.
Okay.
However, they're nice enough to allow us a spot to put our stuff.
Thanks, I appreciate that. Okay.
Well, the judge said everybody was welcome except Daryl. Or maybe it was Jay and Daryl wasn't. I don't remember. It was one of the two. So there's, so there's, um. Um. So I mean, there's some, there's some issues that I, that I, that I'd lie, just personally, not telling you no. Is that, I don't know where you got no from. Uh, is that, uh. Is, is, is to tack down some of these cost amounts.
Right.
Uh, before we just say, well, okay, we didn't think about that and stuff. It could, because my, my conversation with Sam, Goldsmith, was. About that long. We were talking about some other stuff. And. Let the sheriff look at the, um, if you can get with Donnie, or Donnie, you can get with the sheriff or something, so he can look at those, uh. Uh, access points. The other thought was, is that, uh, we would also utilize that for that wildfire coordinator position. Positions over there as well, and potentially the ranger moving from probation to, to there as well. But. Those two are all. Really contingent, I think, on. On. On making the move completely. So.
So if the move goes forward, what's going in the JP's quarters?
Uh, that's a discussion the commissioners' court has to do.
I think they ought to use it for storage. Because we can elevate.
You can elevate it off the floor.
Yeah, we can elevate it off the floor and use it. It's gonna open up a whole quarter in there for storage.
You know, and I know storage is a big deal. My, my only. Concern is, and I would say this to all the department heads. Including me, is that I think we need to look at that, at the, uh. At the retention policy. Because I don't, I still don't think it's gonna fix it, but I think if we look at the retention policy, we could get rid of some stuff, and I know we've done that.
I agree, yeah.
With, with your help. Uh, we had that lady come in from whatever company that was.
Adele Carboni?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Carboni. And, um. Came in and we got rid of a, a bunch of stuff, because we had, the one little closet that we had downstairs was packed full of junk. And it was stuff that had been there forever that we don't need, and, you know, and I really think. Uh, the other. The other issue is not trying to deny, or, or, or not trying to create, uh, of anything but transparency in government. Is if we keep that stuff beyond the retention policy, then we're subject to those records being produced. And there's no reason, if there's no, if, if we're beyond the retention policy. So, um. I think that's, I think everybody, I think every department head needs to kinda do that, not y'all so much as, as the ones here in the courthouse. And the sheriff's office as well. Uh, is go through and see where we at on our, our stuff, you know? Because we don't need stuff. Some of that stuff, uh, don't get me wrong. I, I think we did retain some of the stuff. From our office, strictly from a historical standpoint, because it had been there forever, you know?
Well, and it's whatever you have on file with the Texas State Library, too. Your retention schedule there, everyone has to have one.
And all of the offices have adopted the state schedules.
Yes.
So it's not really this, looking at the schedules, it's looking at what we can get rid of that we should have.
That's a, a better way to say what I just, what I was trying to say.
And on the courts.
Okay.
And on the courts, the Supreme Court has mandated, a lot of the older things are permanent for the courts.
I, I agree, agreed. But what I'm talking about is some of the stuff like. That we were helping y'all with. I think when some of that stuff came up here, it was.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the, the, the people that were found that. They had a, a trial in JP Court, and the person was declared to be insane and was committed to the deal. This is back in the nineteen twenties or something, you know? Pretty, pretty comical reading language back then and stuff. And they had better handwriting than we did, by the way. You could actually read their stuff, so, anyway, um.
But that, that'd be my deal, David, is, is storage.
Yeah.
I mean, because we're always looking for somewhere to put stuff.
We've tried that before, and it ended up being office space, then we were scrambling for storage.
Yeah.
I mean, we've pretty much done away with the storage.
Yeah.
In the basement at all, except for the vault.
Yeah. But anyway, so my, my recommendation is, could we, um, table this for now?
Hmm.
Uh, and, until we can get some of the, the, some of the amounts. For the door locks or, or potentially some of the cameras and stuff, because we don't wanna put you over there. Relying on Jesse's winning personality to calm some kind of situation down, so. Is that all right, y'all?
Yeah, we just need to ballpark.
Yeah.
Figure kinda what we can look at.
So again, I don't know where you got no from.
Well, that's what I was figuring.
Oh, no.
But one of my other points would be, is a, a jury room. Uh, right now, when we have juries, we have to lock up our computers, lock up our desks. Take everything off our desk that's not for public access, so they can use Judge Spears' office as the jury room.
No, I mean, that's a good point. I mean, uh, for, for, and at some point in time, if you guys wanna take a, if you're not familiar with that floor, we can go over there and look at the floor, take a, a quick tour on it. But there's a whole lot of office space over there.
Yeah.
So. And they've, they've, the appraisal district's completely out. They handed, uh, handed Donnie a whole Ziploc bag full of keys and fobs and everything else, and so they're completely out on that deal, so. So are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, just checking.
You want to table it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make motion table.
Motion by Mr. Rains to table it, seconded by Mr. Maxwell to table it. All those in favor, say aye. Motion is tabled.
Yeah.
Judge, before we adjourn, I just wanna recognize that our Texas Association of Counties Human Resource Specialists, Rita Fife, is in the room.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to make the comment that, uh, she and I were in Red County at the same time.
I'm sorry, Rita.
And she was, she was.
Why didn't you leave him there?
Were you, were you in probation?
I was in probation.
Yeah, so. So, yeah. Uh, Ms. Rita's a good, good friend of the, of this county and does a great job for us and stuff, so. Is there anything else on the wildfire mitigation deal that we need to discuss, or will you check on the?
Yeah, Donnie and I.
Cameras and all that stuff?
Yeah, I'll let you know more about what I'm talking about. It's a good thing. On the locks, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, well.
Confusing, leave, leave some weekend adjourned, you confusing.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Rains, and glad to have Mr. Rains back, seconded by Mr. Wilson. All those in favor, say aye. Motion carries, everybody's gone. Glad to see Mr. Maxwell up and, up and.